Ready? Do you have a question? You're good? Okay. Good morning, everyone. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety, as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Before I continue with my remarks, I'd like to make a few introductions. First, our panel. On my far left is Ms. Natalia Popovic. On my near left is Mr. Dominic Gully. On my near right is Ms. Sophia Ruddock. And on my far right is Mr. Bill Dalton. My name's Donald Taylor, and I'll be chairing the hearing today. On the far-left end of this desk is our Deputy Secretary Acting, or sorry, our Deputy Secretary Treasurer, Barbara Bartosik. And in front of the panel and at the far-right-hand end of this desk, we have Barbara's support staff and our support staff. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we're meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone, and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you're called on to speak. Those participating by video conference will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share a presentation submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies, as those terms are defined in the Planning Act, are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our hearing procedure is that I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, with the exception of situations where the applicant has requested deferral from today's hearing, in which case we will dispense with those first and then proceed with the regular agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the applicant, agent, or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions or end or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application, if substantially revised, to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Before hearing our first item this morning, we will require confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting, which I believe was held on November the twenty-third. May I have a motion to adopt those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt those. I believe there was a minor correction on one item.
No, we checked, and the motion didn't include the specifics.
Thank you. I move to adopt as they.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic. And a secondere for Ms. Popovic's motion.
I'll second up.
Mr. Dalton, thank you. All in favor? Okay, the minutes of the meeting held on November the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, if I got that date right?
Twenty.
Are, November twentieth, are adopted.
Mr. Chair, we're just having some issues potentially with audio, so we're just going to ask one of the participants randomly if they can hear.
Okay.
Just to check the audio in the room, I'd like to call upon Mr. Marco Viera to see if you heard the chairman's introductory remarks.
Good morning. Yes, I did.
You did, okay. Thank you very much.
So I don't have to read them again?
No.
Perfect. Okay, I have a question first for panel. Are there any declarations of interest for items in this morning time slot?
Yes, I have two. Number seven, I'm assisting a couple of landowners in that area, so I don't think I should be adjudicating on anything, so I will excuse myself on that one. And number eighteen, the Architect of Record works at the same firm I do, so I'm not involved on that file, but I will remove myself from that item as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dalton. And the same question for staff. Any items to declare conflict of interest? None, thank you. Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury, have we received any requests for deferral from this morning's time slot?
Item seven, Mr. Chair.
Item seven, thank you. Okay, we'll deal with that firstly, once we get there. And Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasury, are there any items on this agenda that need to be closed today? Thank you very much. Okay, we can now proceed then, and we'll start with the request for deferral of... Oh, yes, we also have it right off the bat, yeah, okay.
Hi, hello.
Okay, the request for deferral is with respect to item number seven, two-four-five-five St. Clair Avenue West. The agent is Misha Berzniak?
Yes, I'm connected.
Yes, okay. Sir, we noticed that you didn't register to speak today. Is there any reason for that?
No, apologies. I'm, I'm the applicant on the, on the, shown as the applicant on the application. My understanding was that that would automatically allow me to speak?
No, all agents are required to register based on the notice requirements.
Oh, I see. In any way, I'm only attending to, to ask for a deferral.
Yes, I'm aware of that. I'm just dealing with the issue of you not registering, so we'll, we'll allow you to speak today and just remind you, if there's another occasion for you to speak to the committee, that you do register yourself to speak, okay?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, you're welcome. So, yeah, please tell us why you wish to request a deferral today?
Yes, thank you. There are two, there are two reasons. First of all, after submitting the application, we, we received an updated zoning review, which had small changes. We, based on that, we revised the list of variances, and staff, staff said that they did not have enough time to review that. In addition, we, we are required to provide additional information about three adjacent to the site, which, and we received this request relatively late, so we're not able to do that on time for, for staff to review.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Berzniak. Panel, any questions for Mr. Berzniak?
Chair, I have one question.
Yeah.
In view of the fact that you are asking for a deferral, can you please consider the comments that were submitted by planning and the conditions they made on the application, so that you're prepared to respond to those or address them?
Yeah, yes, we will, we will review and address that in, when, when we are presenting.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the agent? No? Okay, can we then consider a motion to defer this application? Yes, Ms. Popovic?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I will bring that motion on the basis of the comments made by the applicant and move to defer.
Thank you. Secondere for Ms. Popovic. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ruddock. All in favor? Okay, the application has been deferred unanimously. Let's bring Mr. Dalton back.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll now go back to the beginning of the agenda. Item number one, two Nolan Drive. Purposes to legalize and maintain the one-story north-side addition. We have one variance. We have no comments or conditions from agencies or departments. We do have opposition, and I understand Rita Betro is here to, or virtually present to speak to this item.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. However, I don't have the agent anywhere, neither online or in person, and I'm refreshing the attendee list. I still don't see the agent anywhere. Now, that, that being said, there's a Bruno Lopez who might be representing this. I tried to soundcheck him earlier. He's, he's not on the list anywhere else, so I'm gonna try that again, because he might be the agent for this.
Do you want to try quickly, and if we're not successful, we'll move on and come back to that?
Sure. I'd like to call upon Bruno Lopez again, please.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
We definitely have some problems. I was logged in on my computer, and I couldn't hear the, the panel.
That's fine. Are you?
I logged in over my cellphone, so.
That's fine. Are you, are you representing the first item, two Nolan Drive?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and just before you present, sir, we noticed that the original agent, again, did not register, so keep in mind that it's important to preregister if you wish to speak to us. However, we will allow you to speak today, and just if you could pass that information along to the agent, should he wish to present at any time in the future?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Bruno Lopez, from MXL Engineering, located at sixteen forty-nine St. Clair Avenue West, and the agent for the owner. And regarding the agent, it might be an internal process that failed, that usually I'm the agent, but somehow probably they put the name of another associate, and maybe that's why the mistake was happening.
Okay, proceed then.
So this is a very straightforward applicant.
Give us your address as well.
Sixteen forty-nine St. Clair Avenue West.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chair and committee members, morning. This, this again is a very straightforward application. We were contacted by the owner. She's, she's a single person, single lady that has health issues, and anyway, she's been having this second unit in the basement for many years. What she decided to do is this side entrance to the basement, because of snow and whatsoever, she decides to, to, to cover it up. So she contacted a contractor, she got the contractor to do it, and the contractor, again, wrongfully advised, said that there was no permit required, because the existing walls, they're just extending the existing walls, which literally, it's, it's not the case, and for every structural work, we don't understand that the permit has to be taken. So here we are today, a few months later, after doing all the drawings and doing proper documentation for it. So we have one variance, which is very, very tiny, small, so we're supposed to be four feet away. We are three feet away from the, from the property line. Very common, so there is scenarios on eleven Nolan Avenue, which is literally three, four doors down, where there is an extension done on zero property line. So very common to, to have some extensions out there, probably some of them not lawful, but anyway, I believe this is a very, very minor variance. Again, no comments from anybody, from staff, planning, transportation, or so. Everybody's on board, so I believe this is a very straightforward application.
Okay, and you're gonna have an opportunity in a moment to listen to Ms. Rita Betro, and then you'll have an opportunity to rebut whatever we learned from her, okay?
Yep.
Okay, so before we invite Ms. Betro, panel, any questions for the agent? Okay. Okay, Rita Betro?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
You could just repeat your name and your address, and then present to us.
So my name is Rita Betro. I am the co-owner of Ten Lemonwood Drive. I've lived adjacent to the property of two Nolan Drive for fifty-eight years, and also I'm adjacent to the structure that's being proposed.
Okay, thank you. So you can, you can present to us now?
Okay, thank you. I'll start just by thanking Toronto Building Inspectors, Alex Colas and David Maynard, for being responsive and providing information to my many inquiries and concerns, dating from September of last year, when I first asked whether or not there was a permit for the structure being built. My concern was and continues to be the building code regulations being violated, which resulted in a significant increase in the potential fire hazard due to its proximity to our home and the anxiety that this produces. In the rear of my neighbor's home was an outside entrance to the basement. This was put in place by the second homeowner after a fire broke out in the kitchen, and they were concerned that some of their thirteen children did not have a direct exit. This had been, over the years, there was a railing and an awning placed over it for protection against the inclement weather, and this has been removed, and now there's a two-point-five-meter-high structure, enclosed entrance with window and overhang. That's essentially a back porch, which has replaced the original structure. And the overall structure is only a ruler length from the fence. The structure on the property was, I believe, erected with the intention of circumventing the city's zoning code and bylaw, which is to establish, as you know, the minimum distance to ensure adequate open space, visibility, and potentially fire separation between the two homes. Please see pictures B, C, and D on pages two and three. The overhang area is almost fully enclosed on two sides by a wooden fence, which, as you know, is combustible material. This area has been dangerously used as a smoking nook and porch, or to barbecue out of the rain, as you can see through one of the pictures. In fact, the overall structure in question with the software, as I mentioned, makes the overall setback effectively just a ruler length away from the fence, which is too close, and it's not a minor variance. Let's talk about the setback. The neighboring house addresses two Nolan Drive. This is the front of the house. The structure's at the rear of their house. According to the March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five CA survey supporting documents they've provided to you, they state that the north rear yard permitted setback is seven-point-five meters. It's currently one-point-eight-nine, and they wanted to reduce it to zero-point-eight-four. This makes it a significant variance, so now they've tried to amend the application to be a side setback to a paramal minor comparison. However, as per the documentation, the side lot were to be considered as a front lot, and the fifteen-point-eight-three meters would be the new frontage, and agreed according to their application. And as you know, by Regulation ten dot twenty dot forty dot seventy subsection three, the required minimum side yard setback in an R-D zone is about ten percent of the minimum required. So a fifteen-point-eight-three meter front lot would require one-point-five meter setback in subsection D. Furthermore, according to Regulation subsection six, despite the regulation above that I've just mentioned, for a corner lot in the R-D zone, the required minimum side yard setback from a side lot line is three meters. This, too, they were aware of in the original documents of March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as they cited the permitted side setback of three-point-zero-zero. This is not a minor variance, which is why they're playing with the type of possible setback and changing. In addition to this, the general intent purpose of the city's zoning code is to safeguard potential loss of life due to fire for all residents, both those living in my home and in their homes. The creation of this back porch with enclosed structure window and its proximity to the wooden fences with repeated smoking day and night and recent barbecue is a significant fire hazard. I ask the city not be further deceived by the neighbors who have flaunted building codes and on-site.
Sorry, Ms. Betro, you have twenty seconds to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. And I, toward the removal of the structure, which does not provide minimum distance to ensure adequate open space, visibility, fire separation between two homes, and it's also a significant variation from the permitted side porch rear setback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betro. Panel, any questions or comments from Ms. Betro? Okay, then let's invite the agent back. You, sir, you have five minutes, if you need it, to rebut what Ms. Betro has commented on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe we continue to have problems with muting and muting, but here we go. Yeah, I carefully listened to, to the neighbor's comments. Again, I would like to reinforce that we only have one variance. So, so she spoke highly about a lot of different clauses in the bylaws and so, but again, we trust the ability of zoning examiners, and we have one variance. This variance is very, very small. Again, she brought a document with pictures pointing to the neighbors, but I believe this is gonna be for a different venue, because she's clearly invading privacy. But anyway, just sticking to the technicalities, I believe that this is a very, very small, tiny variance that we couldn't get removed. Unfortunately, here we are, and again, it's, it's very, very straightforward application.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions or comments for the agent? No? Okay, then let's go into committee for a decision.
Chair, I am prepared to speak on this item. Indeed, I listened to the neighbor very carefully, and indeed, she quoted the bylaw, and her quotes were correct, no question about it, but the reason we're here is to entertain minor variances. In this case, unfortunately, the homeowner proceeded to make changes without confirming from the city that a building permit was required, and indeed, the resident neighbor is correct in indicating that work was done without the benefit of a permit. In my view, the one variance that's being sought is indeed minor. I know that the neighbor's concerned with respect to fire and ability for firefighting equipment to get to the back. The neighbor's property has a setback in imperial of three feet. This property will have a setback of two feet, sufficient for any access to the rear yard. The variance is being requested from one-point-two to zero-eight-five is indeed minor. Move approval, no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a secondere for Mr. Gully's motion?
I'll second up.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? Okay, the application is approved unanimously. Thank you, Agent and Ms. Betro. We can now move on to item two. Eight oh-one, the Queen's Way. Purposes to modify the parking standards of the ten-story mixed-use building currently under construction. There are three variances. We have a parking study, planning rationale, no agency or department conditions or comments, and no neighbor participation. And we have Ryan Dougherty, the agent?
Good morning.
Good morning. Please repeat your name, give us your address, and then present.
My name's Ryan Dougherty. I'm a land use planner with Bowsfields. My address is Three Church Street in Toronto.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. The application before you today pertains to eight oh-one, the Queen's Way. As mentioned, the lands are developed with a recently constructed ten-story mixed-use building, which was approved by City Council in twenty-twenty-two. We are requesting a total of three variances from the bylaw. This would permit three parking spaces to have a reduced width of two-point-four-seven meters, one parking space to have a reduced width of two-point-five-two meters, and then up to eighteen percent of the parking spaces to be partially obstructed, or otherwise known as small car parking spaces, meaning they don't provide additional width for an obstruction. And so the bylaw currently permits five percent of the parking supply to be obstructed. However, through the actual construction of the building, the applicant and their transportation consultant, BA Group, had flagged that there are more small car parking spaces than originally anticipated. So a functional design review from BA Group was submitted, and it tested the functionality of those spaces, and it concluded that the affected parking spaces will continue to be functional for the majority of vehicle types. Just for your reference, they used a twenty-thirteen Ford Explorer as the test vehicle, and so the variances, in our view, are entirely technical in nature, would not result in any substantial changes to the approved development, and as mentioned, there are no objection letters, to my understanding, or comments from staff. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Dougherty?
I have one question, Mr. Chair. Mr. Agent, what if any caution or information can be passed along to anyone with a unit that's attached to one of these small car spaces?
It's anticipated that through a purchase agreement, that a warning clause would be provided with respect to the size of the parking space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's go into committee then for a motion.
Chairman, I'm prepared to speak on this item. I did review the BA study, and I actually did see the functional turning. I did review the BA study, and I actually did see the functional turning study that BA did conduct, in particular, to ensure that there is some functional ability for a vehicle to get in and out, both in terms of the reduced width as well as the obstructed spaces, having sufficient access to maneuver. What's being requested is indeed nominal, in my view. BA has demonstrated technically that these spaces are functional. They are a small number of spaces. And number three, Transportation Services obviously has concurred with what BA has prepared in view of the fact that they have not submitted any objections to the variances being requested. I move that variance one, two, and three be authorized, and that be authorized with no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a secondor for Mr. Gully's motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? Application's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dougherty.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 359 Edinburgh Court. Purposes to legalize and maintain the existing garden suite in the rear yard. There are two variances. We have a planning condition to construct, as illustrated in the November 21st, 2025 site plan, as it relates to proposed soft landscaping area and permeable paving area in the rear yard. We have no other agency comments or conditions. We have no neighbor participation. The agent is... I guess firstly, panel, I'm seeing this is quite straightforward, not requiring a presentation. We all record with that? Okay, just speak to the agent Sahar... No, is it Sahar Kousha? No, it's...
Hello.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Mahshad Meshkar, the agent, and my address is 180 West Pierre Creek Road, Richmond Hill. I'm here on behalf of the owner of 59 Edinburgh Court, and I'm ready to provide the presentation if required, or answer any question you may have.
Yeah, I think if you're okay, we don't need a presentation. If you're okay, just to... I think you've already said you're prepared to answer any questions if we have any. I just would point out that you did not register to participate today anyway.
I registered today morning. We previously sent my information to the committee staff, but unfortunately, we haven't received the link up to today morning, and I've sent my information and registered today morning.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, so we'll proceed without hearing from you, and I'll ask the panel, are there any questions or comments for the agent?
Chairman, I had a question. There is a planning report relative to your proposal. Have you seen that?
Yes.
And you're okay with those?
I'm aware of the planning report and the condition regarding the permeable paving in the backyard.
And you're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. For sure, we accept that permeable paving, and we updated the site plan to indicate this condition in our site plan. We weren't communicating with the staff regarding this condition.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, then let's go into committee for a motion.
So with that, I'd move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests subject to the November 26, 2025 planning memo that ties to the November 21st, 2025 site plan as it relates to the soft landscaping.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Secondor?
Sir, I had a question. Is Zuri Urban Forestry... You're adding urban forestry to that as a condition?
Yes, I am. Sorry, November 27, 2025, Environment Climate at Forestry.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I forgot about urban forestry one. Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rodick. All in favor? That's approved unanimously with conditions. Moving on to item four, 32 Bucksburn Road. Purposes to construct the existing dwelling into a multi-tenant house. There's one variance. We have ravine and natural features. Protection is okay with the application. TRCA is okay, and they note that a permit is required. No other agency comments, no neighbor participation has been identified. The agent... I guess firstly, panel, are we okay with proceeding without a presentation? Okay.
We also have a letter and support from the councillor that didn't make it into your package.
Mr. Benskowsky?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, committee. Jonathan Benskowsky, 301 Kiwatin Avenue.
Yep. So are you prepared to not present because we find your application quite straightforward?
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. And I did register. You can ask Barb or Ms. Barb.
I know. That's why I didn't say anything. But I'll be making that remark three times later on today. But not to you. Okay, so thank you. We'll open it up to the panel to ask any questions or make any comments if they have any. None? Let's go into committee then for a decision.
Mr. Chair, I will bring a motion to approve this application for, one, minor variance. I believe it meets the four tests. I do not see any conditions.
You are correct. Is there a secondor for Ms. Popovich's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? Application's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Benskowsky.
Thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. Moving on to item five, 415 Rustic Road. Sure, I'm just going to do a quick summary here. Purposes to construct a newly attached fourplex and a new garden suite in the rear yard. There are four variances. We have urban forestry conditions one and two, a planning condition, and six letters of opposition. And we also have a presenter, Frank Caruso, from number 417 Rustic Road. Is Mr. Caruso in the room, or... Yes, sir. Okay, would you like to come to the podium?
Sir, I... The agent, though, is Fausto Cortese. The agent is Fausto Cortese, who I have here on Webex. So this is the neighbor.
Ah, okay. So the agent is Fausto Cortese?
Correct, and Frank Caruso is the neighbor who will also be speaking after Mr. Cortese.
Okay, so first of all, we need to hear from Fausto Cortese. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Cortese.
I had Fausto unmuted, but somehow it got muted again, so I will unmute Mr. Cortese again.
Hello?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, sorry about that. We had a little bit of muting/unmuting issues there. My name is Fausto Cortez. I'm the agent and architect representing the owner in this matter. Our address is 3590 Rutherford Road, Unit 7, Mon, Ontario, L4H3T8.
Okay, thank you. If you could make your presentation, please.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Through the chair, thank you for letting me speak. I think it's a little bit important for me to bring out a couple points here in respect to this application. This application is for a fourplex, which is allowed under the current bylaw, and in taking on this file, we asked the owner to... that we would only take on the file if we could create something that was not overly large and met the majority of the bylaw, and would be deemed to be realistic and not pushing the envelope in terms of requirements. He agreed, so we did take on the file. In taking on the file and designing the fourplex, we made sure that it looked like a single-family dwelling from the street line. We didn't want to create anything that looked like, you know, a more traditional fourplex. So if you see the front elevation, we feel that it looks like a single-family dwelling. We've provided access to the other units within the dwelling from the side of the dwelling, which is hidden from the road, and emphasizes the fact that it looks like a single-family dwelling. It was also important for us to maintain the majority of the existing characteristics, and in doing so, we felt it was important to maintain the access of the neighbor's driveway. So we made sure that the existing... that we exceeded the existing setback. The existing setback was, according to our survey, was 1.49 meters. We extended it to 1.5 meters. The other thing that we felt was important was because we were proposing a garden suite, we felt that it would be important to make the... not to go to the outer limits of the allowable setbacks, and we created a more square unit. We've increased both the side yards and rear yard setbacks from the garden suite, as well as we've met all the required limiting distance requirements. The other thing we felt that was important was we didn't want to create any sort of parking issues on the site or in the neighborhood. So even though the parking requirement is zero, we have provided five parking spaces, three internal and two external, on the site, and we've provided great access to those parking spots. So we felt that we met those... we exceeded those requirements. The other thing was that was important to us was because we were proposing a garden suite, we wanted to create a good garden suite. We didn't want to create a micro unit or anything of that nature. And if you looked at the floor plans, the garden suite is a great suite. But because we needed to exceed the allowable coverage of that garden suite, we felt it would be important to reduce the overall's main dwelling suite. So if you notice, according to our chart, the actual main dwelling could be up to 30% coverage, which would allow 208 square meters, and we were much less than that at 23%. So even though we asked for a small increase in the garden suite size, we compensated by creating a smaller main dwelling. So we felt that that was important. And it's also important to note that variance number four is a technical variance. It was requested by staff, and it was requested because we were modifying the existing driveway after our... after the front property line, and he felt that it would be prudent to include that variance. So that's number four. Variance number one and two have to do with the front yard setback, and that has to do with... for the sheer fact that we've increased the second floor footprint over the existing porch. We chose to do that because it greatly improved the upper suite's living room component. However, we could have lived without it, but we felt that the benefits outweighed the disadvantages of doing that. If we didn't do that, and we didn't extend the upper floor over the existing port... or sorry, the proposed porch, then we would have not required variance one and two. So that's, I felt, was an important...
Mr. Cortese, you have 30 seconds?
Yes. Overall, I think that we've maintained the integrity of the existing conditions. We've tried to be, through design, maintain the neighbor's existing conditions, and we feel that by reducing and moving ourselves away from the existing setbacks or proposed... sorry, allowable setbacks for the garden suite, we think that we've provided everyone ample privacy in terms of... from the proposed garden suite. I'm here to answer any other questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortese. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Cortese? No? Okay, then let's invite Mr. Caruso from number 417 Rustic Road.
Good morning.
Morning.
And thank you. So first of all, this committee is not my usual stomping grounds, so to the extent that any of the...
Sorry, if I may, I'm not going to put the clock on yet, but just a comment for you and the others who've written in in opposition.
Yep.
Fourplexes are permitted in all neighborhoods throughout the city of Toronto. So the issue today is not the appropriateness of a fourplex, it is with respect to whether or not any or all of the four variances requested meet the four tests. So now I'll put you on the clock.
To the extent that my letter submission raises anything that's not appropriate, then my primary submission is going to be to ask for a deferral on the basis of notice. I understand from city staff that notice was done in this case without a mail-out due to the postal strike, and that the homeowner was instructed to put up a sign to provide 10 days' notice. They have not done that. The sign was down as of either Friday night or Saturday morning, and it has been down since then. So the sign was up for seven days from when they first put it up. I anecdotally can tell you that I spoke with one of the neighbors to the south of us on the street that backs onto ours, and they were not aware of this application. So my main submission is going to be to ask for a deferral so that a mail-out can be provided and the neighbors can be properly put on notice. I had some submissions... I hope my letter made it to the committee. Well, it looks like it's up there, so yes. I had some submissions about the use of the property so far. I don't know if that's something the committee will consider, but the property so far has been used not as a single-family dwelling. It's a two-bedroom bungalow, the same as the other ones on our street. It's been used as sort of a rooming house. We've had... I've never been able to count the number of people, but every morning, a bunch of vans pull up and a bunch of workers come out and get into the vans. There have been people living in the garage. Power provided to the garage via an extension cord running out from the back of the house. Cars have been parked on the back lawn, on the front boulevard. At one point, there was a... I was sitting on my porch, and I saw that there was someone living in the cold cellar underneath the porch, all of which just raises concerns to myself, my wife, and a couple of the neighbors I've spoken to about what's going to happen when this is no longer a two-bedroom unit housing 10 or whatever number of people it is, and it becomes a 10-bedroom unit. So we do have concerns about that. The variances themselves, you know, my submissions are in my letter. I would suggest that a 25% increase in the garden suite is not minor variance. That's a pretty significant variance. I raised the question as to drainage. I don't know if that's something this committee considers, but this is a very large green space that is now going to be... looks like pavement and roofing, and I don't know if there has been provision made for what that will do to the drainage. The backyards in our side of the street are uphill from the houses, so I have some concerns about what that will do to my insurance and basement. And then finally, there is the driveway issue, which I've flagged. I heard the agent make some comments that they've preserved the setback on our side. I can't read the drawings well enough to be able to tell whether my driveway will be functional after this. It looks to me like it would not. I don't know if the setback was a reference to the setback of the house or the setback of whatever fencing or walkway is going to be used to access the entries on the east side of the proposed structure. So I can advise... I put in my letter, and I can advise the committee that I'm in the process of retaining counsel, and I expect we'll be filing an application for an easement to maintain my use of the driveway. I don't want to make things difficult for these guys. I understand that they can develop, but I do need to be able to reach my garage, and from what I saw, I don't think my car would be able to reach my garage. So those are my submissions. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Before I open it up for panel questions or comments, Madam Secretary... Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are we satisfied with the appropriateness of the notice that was given for this application?
The applicant will have to advise if they... because we've gotten confirmation that they posted the sign, but they'll have to advise whether they took it down prematurely. It is supposed to stay up for the full 10 days.
Okay, thank you. So panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Caruso? No? Okay, then. Mr. Cortese?
Yes, sir.
You have an opportunity to rebut the comments raised by Mr. Caruso.
Thank you. Through the chair. When we post a sign, we do provide a declaration that the sign has been posted. We do typically drive by the properties to make sure that the sign has been maintained and been up. We also indicate to the owner of the property that the sign should be maintained and being up. I will say that I did drive by, I believe. I cannot tell you how many days after we posted the sign. I would probably say about five to six days after we posted the sign on the property, and it was still up. Now, I'm not... I did not drive by after that, so I'm... Um, now, I'm not, I did not drive by after that. Um, uh, so I'm, I, I cannot. Uh, 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 say if it, if it maintained, i- if it was up for the full ten days. Um, my, my understanding is in one letter, they, uh, it said that it had blown over. Um, I'm not sure when it blew over or, uh, but I will, I can gi- assure you that. I drove by either five or si- five or six days after and the sign was still up. So that I can, uh, I can, uh, contest, but, uh.
But if the sign, if you were notified that the sign blew over, did you ensure that it was posted again?
No, we, we weren't, uh, we weren't notified that the sign was, uh, blown over.
But you just said, someone commented that the sign was blown over.
Oh, yeah, I, I just read the, I read the, uh, the letters of objection last night. I, and I just saw it in one of the letters. That's, that's how I, I, I came to know.
Okay, because you have to satisfy the committee that you met the planning act requirements. So we need you to confirm that the sign was posted for the full ten days.
Like I said, I, I went by five or six days later. It was there. I did not go on the ninth or tenth day.
It still should be up, right?
Yeah.
So is your client or is the owner living on site? Can someone provide a picture that the picture, that the sign is there now? Because it's still.
My client does not live on the property and, uh, I don't think I can, uh, uh, I can drive by today and, and see if it's there, but. Uh, I, I don't know.
As of today, uh, I think I took a picture either yesterday.
You haven't been asked to come back.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I got a question.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yes, so, uh, I think I have a picture on my phone from either yesterday or this, this morning. But in my letter, there were pictures as of, I think it was Monday or Tuesday that the sign.
So your pictures of yesterday show what? The sign down? Gone?
Uh, it's either down or covered in snow. It's, it's not up. I know that.
So that's a notice issue.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Do you have anything else to say, uh, Mr. Cortese?
Uh, no, other than, uh, other than we've, uh, we've tried to, uh, respect the driveway of the neighbor. Uh, you know, there is no easement on title, um, you know, uh, but my client has chosen to, uh, respect that, uh, driveway. And provide equal, equal distance to than what is currently on site. So that's all.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Cortese, panel?
Well, just that it seems like we have a notice issue.
Well, I was going to suggest that's the first thing we have to deal with, if, if we're satisfied with the adequacy. Of notice and, and if we're not, I guess our, our, uh, course of action would be to defer, but we'll need a, a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chair, um, I share the concerns of my colleagues, uh, about the notice issue, in particular, the. The duration and under the planning act that is required. And I also note that at this point, we do have, um, I believe, six letters of opposition. Eh, with proper notice, we don't know if we'll have additional concerns from, from other neighbors. So I, I do believe we have a, a notice issue at this point.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer. Is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? That's a unanimous decision to defer this application on grounds that the, uh, notice is, uh, I guess at best questionable?
So just to let the applicant know, you have to reach out to the application technician. About getting rescheduled and it is your responsibility to ensure that the sign is posted for the full ten days when it is rescheduled. Because it'll just be deferred again if it's not up for the full ten days.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to item six, ten to eighteen Zora Street. Application is to alter the development standards as outlined in bylaw twelve eighty-six, twenty twenty-three to accommodate a thirty-three-story residential building. We have two planning conditions. A presentation, which I will invite in a moment. Oh, Ryan Doherty again.
Hello again.
Hi. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll need a presentat- I certainly need a presentation here because, and I'll just say this as a general comment. I don't like the way a lot of these variances are structured relative to clarity and ease of understanding. Especially for the public and secondarily for people like me who know a lot about this stuff. But I want to be told the story, not, I don't want to be referred to another bylaw or another schedule.
Understood.
So I, I would urge you to, uh, tell your client that it would be much preferable. To cite variances in a concise, readable manner. So with that being said, uh, please present.
Thank you, and, and just again for the record, my name is Ryan Doherty. Address is Three Church Street. Um, oh, thank you to staff for pulling up my presentation. Um, so just by way of background, this site did receive zoning approval in twenty twenty-three. Uh, to allow for a residential development consisting of a twenty-eight-story building. The requested variances would allow for an increase in height of the building from twenty-eight to thirty-three stories. That would reflect a five-story increase, um, also a corresponding increase in the permitted density and dwelling units. Um, this application also requests a handful of technical variances. One of which being a two-point-five meter increase in the height of the podium, although there is no increase in stories. Um, and a slight readjustment in the location of the tower, which I will show in a moment. Um, and there's also a reduction in resident parking that is proposed as well. We have worked closely with city staff on this application to land on the list of variances. Um, those conversations with staff date back to, uh, December of last year. Um, and any changes approved by you today would be carried forward and continued to be reviewed by staff through a future site plan approval application. Um, so community planning have written a report indicating no objections to the application. And we do respectfully request that the committee consider and review the conclusions of staff. Um, so just in terms of the site context, the site is located along Zora Street, just south of Queensway, north of the Gardner Expressway. This site is in, uh, what I would call an emerging community comprised of a mix of mid-rise and tall buildings centered around, uh, Senator Marion Maloney Park. We could go to the next page. Um, just more broadly, the site is located in the area between the Queensway. Or along the Queensway between Kipling and Islington Avenue. We could go to the next page. Um, and as mentioned, the site is within an emerging high-density community, um, in particular, a node of tall buildings. Um, so there are currently a number of mid-rise and tall buildings surrounding the site, including the IQ condominiums to the immediate east. That's the twelve and twenty-four-story buildings. There's also the thirty-six Zora Building to the south, which is thirty-five stories. And there are approvals within the surrounding block ranging up to forty-three stories. To the immediate west on the Kipling Queensway Malllands, it's on the left side of the map. There is a new application proposing many new tall buildings ranging up to sixty-five stories. Again, that is still under review. We could go to the next page. This is a zoomed-out version of that same height map and this illustrates the full context. Of what is approved and proposed between Islington and Kipling. And this shows, um, the existing towers within immediate proximity to the site, uh, which I mentioned, range up to forty-three stories. The towers proposed on the Kipling Queensway Malllands to the west. As well as the application which was recently approved by council on the Synoplex site at Islington, which has heights ranging up to forty-six stories. Um, and then the mid-rise context along the Queensway, which continues to be built out and is maintained. So in our opinion, the proposed thirty-three-story height continues to fall within the context of tall building approvals in this area. We could go to the next page. Um, the site and surrounding area is designated mixed-use areas shown in the red color, which is where growth and anticip- intensification is planned to occur. We could go to the next page. The site is located south of the avenues identification applying to the Queensway. That's in the brown color. We could go to the next page. This is a comparison of the two diagrams. I will show a section drawing in a moment, which I think will illustrate some of these changes a bit better. Um, the comparison is the approved built form envelope on the left and what's proposed on the right. Um, the overall form and site organization of the proposal is quite similar. However, the key changes would be the increase in height of the tower as well as the, uh, metric height increase for the podium. Um, the tower has been slightly extended north and south by about one-point-five meters. Um, and the mechanical penthouse level has been pulled back from the north by about four meters. If we could go two slides ahead, that would take you to the elevation drawing. Thank you. So these illustrate the changes a little bit better. Um, what we've illustrated here is the, um, as-of-right envelope, which is in red. Um, and what is being proposed through the variances in blue. Um, and so as illustrated here, the changes are limited primarily to the increase in height of the tower. Um, the other built form changes again pertain to, um, that sort of shifting in the positioning of the tower to the north and south. As well as that metric height increase in the podium. Um, again, we think this height increase is appropriate based on the context, um, falling within the pattern of approved heights in the area. Given the spatial separation offered by the Queensway as well as some of the other developments. We think there continues to be significant separation from low-rise uses, which are located on the north side of the Queensway. Um, and the applicant has also submitted, uh, supporting technical materials. Uh, including from their transportation and servicing consultants speaking to, uh, the decreased parking and increase in unit count. Um, and those reports will be, continue to be reviewed through the SPA application. Um, so overall, we think this is a good application. We think it meets the four tests. Um, we've worked collaborat- collaboratively with city staff to bring this application forward. Um, and we think the commentary contained within the community planning report, uh, reflects that. So thank you for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Doherty. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Doherty?
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment. Mr. Agent, uh, I note that there are two conditions in the community planning November twenty-fifth memo. You've read those and your client is content to comply.
Yes, we have no issues with those conditions.
Thank you.
Anything else, panel? Okay, then I guess we can go into committee for a motion.
Chairman, I, I prefer to speak on this item. Um, there are indeed, uh, eight variances before us. Um, and I think the explanation, uh, to the panel and to the public, uh, was very clear. Um, in my view, uh, variances four, five, six, and seven are indeed technical in nature and relate to the fact that, uh, uh, the units are being increased, uh, in number. As well as the, uh, number of stories in the building from twenty-eight to thirty-three. I don't think height is an issue. Um, so I'm going to put that aside. Uh, with respect to the number of units and the GFA being increased, I don't think there's any perceptible. Uh, differences to what council had originally envisioned and anticipated at this, uh, uh, at this site, at this project. And with respect to, to the parking, um, I think it's clear, uh, that the, the issue of parking. Is not an issue with transportation services. It's not an issue with me. Uh, I believe that, uh, what's being proposed, uh, is appropriate. Um, notwithstanding the fact that there are eight variances, I think the variances individually and collectively are appropriate and they are desirable. I'm going to move approval, uh, of the variances, uh, with no conditions.
Think, uh, there are conditions.
Oh, sorry. The planning conditions, indeed, of, um, November twenty-fifth. There are two conditions. Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, the two planning conditions, uh, in the planning report of November the twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a seconder for Mr. Gully's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. All in favor? It's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Gully, uh, uh, Dalton, Doherty, sorry. Get there eventually. Item seven has been dealt with. Moving on to item eight. Sixty-five Princeton Road. Purposes to construct.
Uh, good morning, uh, Mr. Chair.
I'm not quite ready yet. To construct a new covered rear yard deck, there are, it's a revised application. There are four variances. Variances one and four were amended from the original submission. Uh, panel, are we in agreement that this is straightforward, not requiring a presentation? Okay, so, um. I believe the person that spoke is Nikolai Wagonov?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes, good morning. Um, I'm ready to present. Uh, if, if needed, but this is very straightforward.
Sorry, I need your, I need, first of all, I need your address.
Oh, sure. It's Seventeen King George's Drive, Toronto. My full name is Nikolai Wagonov.
Okay, and, uh, we've just determined that we do not require a presentation from you. This is a very straightforward application. Are you agreeable to not presenting and in lieu being prepared to answer any questions that we may have?
Uh, yes, I agree, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Wagonov? Nothing? I'll ask one. Uh, urban forestry condition two has been requested. Are you in agreement with that?
Well, I'm sure we, we will address this. Uh, I was a bit surprised because we don't have any trees on the backyard. It's probably regarding some huge trees the neighbors might have, but. I'm sure we will figure this out with the forestry and we'll get the permit for the in- injury of a tree. Yeah, see no problem with that.
Okay, thank you. So let's go into committee for a motion.
So with that, I move a motion for approval, uh, for the application as amended, as I do believe it meets the four tests subject to. The November twenty-seventh environment, climate, and forestry memo.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a seconder for Mr. Dalton's motion?
I will second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wagonov.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nine. Four oh five Silverthorn Avenue. Purposes to construct a new two-story garden suite in the rear yard that will include an attached garage. The existing detached garage and shed will be demolished. There are five variances. We have urban forestry condition one. We have a metro links advisory. And from ravine and natural features, we have an okay with a notation that advisory three. In front yard. I, I don't understand what that means. Um, Madam Deputy Secretary of Treasure?
So typically, if. The tree could be damaged or removed as, as of right. For a permit that complies with the bylaw, urban forestry will not object. But that doesn't mean they don't have concerns or may not necessarily approve something because of this application.
Okay, thank you.
They're, they're warning the applicant that they may not get the permit.
Okay, uh. Panel, do you agree with me that this is pretty straightforward and does not require a presentation?
Hello, uh, good morning.
Hello, hello, Mr. Perez.
Morning, Chairman, Community Member. My name is Eddie Perez. I'm at five thirty-seven Rogers Road.
Okay.
If you need any, uh, additional information, I'll be happy to answer your question.
Okay, that's, that's great to know. Um, I'll ask the first question. Are you okay with the, uh, ravine and natural features? Advisory three as it applies to the front yard?
Yeah, we're okay with it.
You're, you're okay. That's good. Panel, any other questions or comments? Then let's go into committee for a motion.
So with that, I move a motion for approval, as again, I believe this application is very straightforward, meets the four tests subject to the environment, climate, and forestry condition.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a seconder for Mr. Dalton's motion?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? That's proved unanimously?
Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. You too. Okay, moving on to item nine, or sorry, ten, fifty Cannon Road. Uh, just let me read from the notice here. Sorry, bear with me. Sorry, bear with me. 50 Cannon Road. Purposes to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are five variances. We have urban forestry requesting denial. And then in a November 25th freestanding memo, they provided their condition one as an alternative should we wish to approve this application. I think in light of the urban forestry comment, it's pretty straightforward, but I think in light of urban forestry, we need to hear from the agent. And we also have a neighbor who wishes to speak on this item, John Males. So the agent is Felix Leicher?
Yes.
You're Mr. Leicher?
Good morning, yeah.
And we noticed you didn't register to speak to us today? Any reason for that?
Um, in Toronto and Scarborough, they asked you not to register an agent, so I was not aware that I was requested to.
Well, you're in a tobacco today.
I know. I learned. First time here, so.
Okay, so tell us, make a presentation. We particularly like to hear your comments on urban forestry, who has initially requested deferral, sorry, refusal of your application.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so as you mentioned, the application is a two-story single-family home with an integral garage on the 40-foot wide lot. We're proposing five variances. Those variances are related to floor space index, sideyard setback, building length, and the size of two balconies. It's our opinion that the proposed variances are in keeping what has been approved by this committee in the past, as well as they are appropriate for the lot and minor singularly, as well as in combination. Community planning didn't have any comments on the project, and we're not aware of any neighbor's objection. I heard that somebody's speaking now. We'll consider what comes up. Urban forestry has submitted that memorandum you mentioned recommending refusal of three variances. Specifically, they recommend a refusal of variance number one, which is related to floor space index, and variance number three related to building length. There's also a third variance, which they referred to, I'll address it shortly. Urban forestry started, stated the reason for recommending refusal of these variances, that the approval may require the removal of a healthy tree and the permanent loss of viable planting space. I would like to clarify that neither the proposed FSI nor the building length would encroach in any tree protection zone. In fact, the proposed home itself does not encroach in any tree protection zone. Only a small piece of the proposed front porch, which is as-of-right, touches a tree protection zone. Urban forestry recommends refusal of a third variance, which doesn't have anything to do with our proposal. They call it variance number two and relate to a reduced front yard setback. Our proposal doesn't suggest any variances related to front yard setback or front yard You would ask to consider that none of the proposed variances relate to trees or tree protection zones, nor planting space. The proposed front yard landscaping would also be present in any similar as-of-right proposal. They would all have similar setback, similar parking situation, similar driveway. And therefore, we would ask that you consider forestry's recommendation of condition number two, in case you consider our proposal appropriate, which would still give forestry the option to oppose any of our suggestions how to deal with the trees in the front yard and the proposed driveway, but would allow us to further discuss this matter with forestry. Thank you.
Did you say urban forestry condition two?
Number one.
Number one, yes.
Number one is related to city trees.
Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Leicher?
Chair, I had a question. Have you had conversations with the forestry department?
We were able to submit a revised site plan of a driveway which would meander through the two trees in the front yard, but we didn't have time to have a meaningful discussion with them about it.
So you haven't had any conversations? Do you feel comfortable going ahead, proceeding for this committee to make a decision and possibly, possibly make it subject to urban forestry? You're prepared to take that risk without further consultations?
I believe there will be, there is a solution which allows the trees to survive the construction period, which is, in my opinion, even harder than the driveway itself, and I'm positive that we can have this discussion with them for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, panel?
Well, just a comment. The Arbus report that was submitted with the application indicates that the tree in question is tree number one.
Yeah.
That forestry is taking issue with, and it's a 92-centimeter city-owned Linden tree, and the report is saying it's going to be injured, but steps will be taken to preserve it, so they'll have to figure that out with forestry. And so they'll be watching that because that's a pretty big tree, so, and it should be preserved.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Leicher. If you'll take your seat, and we're going to invite John Males to speak now.
Hello, Mr. Chair. My name is John Males. I live at 39 Cloverhill Road. I am not an owner. I have lived there for 13 years, consequences of a work injury many years ago, so I no longer can rent normally. I've reviewed some of the comments in the application, and I have the following comments myself. Of note, not a big objection, but the deck setbacks represent about a 25% change to the specified bylaw requirement. I do have an objection, oops, to the deck area space that they are proposing. One of the decks is over a 500% increase to the specified amount, if I understand what's written in the requirements, and the other one is representing almost 900% increase. The 900% increase, I believe, is the front deck. The building setbacks represent about an 80% and 7.86% change to the variances. I know it was mentioned earlier, and I go to mention this now. I put these in no particular order on my notes. There is a sign that's posted for the notice of application. That sign has not been there since at least the 27th of November, and is still not there as of today. I have photos that can prove it. I wasn't there every day, even though I lived behind it. I unfortunately have been in and out of hospital several times, including by ER through a 911 call. But I do have timestamp photographs on my phone dating back to at least the 27th, so the sign's not there. So if I understand correctly, that sign's still supposed to be there as of today. With respect to the trees, I completely object. Tree number two, which is the one they want to propose to take down, and tree number one have been there probably for at least 60-odd years, if not more. And I don't understand why they want to injure tree number two, and in doing so, what the consequence of doing that to the tree long-term. Not really at the application, but just so you know, two oak trees were dealt with in the last few weeks as a result of a call to 311 I made. They had significant dead, large dead branches. City crews came in, well, not city, but contractors came in, dealt with it. Everything's fine. They have to do it in November because of some virus thing. So I question the validity of injuring a tree and removing another that have been around for probably over 60 years, based on their size. As you've noted, Arbus Forestry has requested it to be denied, and there's no, nothing on the site plan that shows the retaining wall that sits at the back of 39 Cloverhill Road to basically the property that used to be 52 Cannon Road, that's now 46, 52, and the proposed 50. So we don't know what consequences of construction and other things that might interfere or damage that retaining wall, given the setbacks that they're going to want to do, plus the construction equipment. And so if you have any questions, I've managed to get it in less than five minutes, which is pretty good for me.
Okay. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Males?
Can you just confirm? You said 39 Cloverhill Road, right?
Yes, that's where I live.
Okay.
And 39 is basically to the north of what used to be 52 Cannon Road before it was sold a few years ago. It was like a large farmhouse kind of property.
So is that, that original house has been demolished, I believe?
Oh, yes. It was demolished as a result of building 52 and 46.
Yeah, because I see the new lot lines sit on the old building.
Yeah, well, I won't get into the lot line things. I've already been to the LRO.
I think you were here to speak to the consent application several months ago.
For 54A.
Knew I'd seen you before.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
So just to confirm, you're saying the notice hasn't been there since November 27th?
Has not been there since the 27th of November.
Okay.
And I can provide the phone pictures to those that are timed and date-stamped.
Thank you.
Mr. Leicher, if you could please come up and speak to Mr. Leicher's, particularly, but not limited to the, again, the adequacy of notice.
Yeah, like I can't say anything. I haven't been out there since past this 27th, so I can't say anything regarding that.
Could you stand a little closer, too, and maybe bend that microphone down? There you go.
No, it's too loud, I believe.
Don't be intimidated. I need all the volume I can get.
Okay. I haven't been out there since November 27th, so I can't confirm or deny what the neighbor says, so I guess we had similar point as before, where the notice was not.
And there's other comments, the size of your deck? You need to speak to everything?
I believe we'll get back to that on a different date. Don't want to take up any of your time, but I'm happy to respond if you ask me to.
Questions, comments, panel?
I agree. The notice issue is the neighbor's problem, but also if I, if you can clarify, since you're standing here before us, that the neighbor's concern is that the tree would be removed or damaged, but I heard, correct me if I'm wrong, in your presentation, that no trees be removed or damaged because you've altered the path of the driveway. Is that fair?
Correct. This is an altered path, which is currently not in the application. There's no variance regarding the front yard landscaping or that driveway. And the urban forestry comment only came last Thursday, so we weren't able to submit anything else.
Okay, so in fairness, you might want to have updated plans.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, panel? Okay, then let's go into committee, and I guess deal firstly with the concerns about the adequacy of notice again, before we get into the merits of the application.
Mr. Chair, if the applicant can't verify that the sign is posted, I'm not comfortable that they've met Planning Act requirements.
Yep.
I agree with you.
Yeah, and with that, I'd move a motion for a deferral based on questionable notice.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Application's deferred unanimously.
And I'd also add, too, that the applicant should then, if you've given, made changes to the driveway and are in process of making it better for the trees, then get your new plans in as well, so you can kill two birds with one stone.
You want to revise?
The revised plan should then be submitted, and that should be then sent out for the notice, because it addresses, you know, what needs to be addressed with this application.
And I'll add, it may assist urban forestry in their review.
Absolutely. You'll get a better report from them.
And I would add that it would be prudent for you to speak with Mr. Males. He raises an issue about the size of the deck. He is immediately and directly impacted by that. See if he can sort something out that is agreeable to both of you. So the application has been deferred unanimously, and it's after 11:00. Is there any desire for a break? No? We're okay, we'll keep going?
I could use five minutes.
You could use five minutes? Well, it's going to be 10:00. Okay, so we are going to break until 11:15. Okay, so we are going to break until eleven fifteen. Okay, everyone, thank you for allowing us a short break. We'll now get back onto the agenda with item number eleven, seventy-seven Jackson Avenue. Purpose is to construct a one-story rear addition and a two-story rear addition. There are two variances. We have a tree protection plan, an arborist report submitted by the applicant, we have no other agency comments or conditions. We have no members of the public registered to speak. Turn your camera on. Turn my camera on. Good advice. So, panel, do we need a presentation on this? Pretty straightforward, I think?
I agree.
Okay. So the agent is to Roshan, that's you, sir?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow committee members. Just for the record, my name's Roshan Thurman, planner at Design Plan Services, Inc., located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, Suite 200.
Thank you. So we've decided, decided it's straightforward, we really don't need a presentation, but if you're okay, we'll just ask any questions or make any comments if we have any?
I'm acceptable to that, Mr. Chair. Happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Perfect. So, panel, questions, comments? None? Then let's go into committee for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I will bring that motion. This matter is for two minor variances and no agency comments or concerns. I believe it meets the four tests. I move to approve, and I see no conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich, second her for Ms. Popovich's motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, all in favor? Unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. Moving on to item twelve, two Cardell Avenue. Purpose is to legalize and to maintain the one-story rear addition and covered deck currently under construction. We have an order to comply, a MetroLinks advisory, a Ministry of Transportation advisory, an eight-signature support petition, and no other agency comments or conditions, no registered public speakers. Panel, are we okay with treating this as straightforward?
Agreed.
Okay, so the agent is Lena Rodriguez.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Selena Rodriguez, and my address is eleven fifteen four five one diversity.
Okay. And, and are you okay with us proceeding without a presentation from you? We find this application to be quite straightforward. If we have any questions or comments, we'll of course make them or ask them. Are you okay with proceeding that way?
We answered the question.
Okay, then. Any questions or comments, panel? Then let's go into committee for a motion.
Chair, I'm going to move that the two variances be authorized. Both variances are very minor in nature. They're desirable, they're appropriate, move approval, no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a second here for Mr. Gully's motion? Thank you, Mr. Dalton, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, I'm on speed.
You too. Moving on to item thirteen, thirty-one Norden Avenue. Purpose is to construct a second-story addition above the existing dwelling. Three variances. No comments or conditions from agencies or departments. No registered speakers from the neighborhood. Panel, may we treat this as straightforward?
Agreed.
Mr. Vera.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
And members of the committee. My name is Marco Vera, I'm the agent and the designer, and I'm at two five seven Dunraven Drive. I'd be happy to answer any questions or give you a small presentation if required.
Do you wish to make a small presentation, or are you okay with foregoing that?
Mr. Chair, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yes.
I just noticed, I think the one up on the screen might be the wrong item, but it's three items that particularly deal with the existing conditions.
Right.
Yep, that's the correct one, so I, I look for your support on this application.
Okay. So, panel, any questions or comments?
No questions.
Then let's go into committee for a motion.
So with that, I'd move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, a second here for Mr. Dalton's motion.
I'll second that.
Ms. Popovich, thank you, all in favor? That's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Vera.
Thank you.
And I see that you're up again, and I'm going to ask the panel the same question in just a moment. Purpose is to construct a two-story addition, a front basement walkout, stairs along the east side of the dwelling, and a new front porch. The existing dwelling will be converted into a triplex. There are six variances. We have a MetroLinks advisory. And I, I have a question on this, but I don't think we need a presentation unless anyone-
I, I agree, Mr. Chair, I'll note that the revisions page was added.
Ah.
In the additional materials.
Yes, right. So are you okay, we don't need a presentation?
I agree.
I asked a question. Okay, Mr. Vera, are you okay with, again, not presenting, but we do have at least one question for you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I am.
Okay. So the question is with respect to variance five, as revised, you're requesting a zero-point-nine-four wide driveway, which would not accommodate the passage of any vehicle except a bicycle or motorcycle. Could you comment on what, what, what's intended there?
Certainly, through you, Mr. Chair. That variance arises from the back portion of the dwelling, where we are adding the second story, and we're creating a new stairs that go up to the second floor. And at that point, the driveway will effectively be reduced to point nine-four. There is an existing shed in the rear. We do have very limited access currently to access the rear yard. The front yard and the space between the dwellings, up to the extent of the addition, is going to remain. We feel that this is just more technical in nature, simply because we're adding the stairs in the back half. We will not need access to the rear for vehicle, and the front is being maintained and remaining as is.
Okay, so the usable driveway will be from the stairs to the street?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, panel? Then let's go into committee for a motion.
So with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval for the application as amended, as I believe it meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Second here for Mr. Dalton's motion.
I will second that.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? It's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, committee members, have a wonderful day.
You too. Moving on to item fifteen, one forty-six Thirtyth Street. Purpose is to construct a mezzanine within a portion of the existing building. There's one variance. I think, I was going to say, I don't think we need a presentation, but on, on second thought, I, I think we do. This is a little bit difficult to understand, so maybe you can just take a few minutes and tell us what, what this is all about.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Just for the record, my name is Addison Mill Price. I'm a planner at Design Plan Services, located at eighty-seven Skyway Avenue, here on behalf of the property owner.
Welcome.
So, I'll, I'll briefly go over, there is just one variance, as the chair pointed out, for FSI. Just for clarification, this is an existing building, and there are no changes proposed to any of the exterior walls. For further clarification, these changes that are proposed have actually occurred already, and construction happened without a permit. So we're currently in the process of legalizing these changes that have, that have happened to the internal of the building, and through that, we're going through a building permit process, and we also, through that process, were notified that the FSI is, is now higher because of these intermediate floors.
And if you're, if you're not exchanging the exterior perimeter of the building, we'll need to hear why you need a variance. we'll need to hear why you need a variance.
Mr. Chair, this was a variance that was identified. I believe it's because additional floor space was added through a mezzanine. So, the floor plans are a little complex, there's a lot going on in this building. But if you go to the floor plans, you can see there are areas that are cut out, indicating where exactly those, I think it's on one of the other drawings. Yeah, you can see there is a cutout perfect, showing where those mezzanine floors are. All of the areas that are sort of outside that floor plan is the additional floor space. Represents about an addition of three hundred and ninety-six square meters. So, as this building was existing before these changes, it was already about one point zero FSI, and these changes increased it to one point one one. Again, this is completely imperceptible from the outside, and it was so minor that the owner didn't realize that a permit was required.
Okay. So, any comments or questions on this zero-impact variance request?
Just a question, you said this is to legalize, when was the order to comply issued? Because we don't have it on file.
Through, Mr. Chair, I'm not certain, I believe it was approximately a year ago. So, it's been some time. Drawings were kind of complex to draw, but we're doing our best to get it legalized right now.
So, they're in for a permit now as well?
That is correct, yes.
Any other questions, comments, panel? No? Okay, then let's go into committee for a motion.
Chair, I am very familiar with this location, very familiar with the building standing, and I believe the one variance that they're asking on FSI from one to one point one one is indeed minor, appropriate, and desirable, move approval, no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Gully, seconded from Mr. Gully, thank you, Ms. Rodic, all in favor? That's approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neil Pierce. Item sixteen, thirty-two Grove Dale Avenue. Purposes to convert the existing detached garage into a two-story garden suite. A previous committee of adjustment application approved variances related to side yard setback, rear yard setback, and a soft landscaping deficiency. There's one variance. No agency comments or conditions. No registered public speakers. Panel, are we satisfied to treat this as straightforward, not requiring a presentation? Okay. So... Mr. Conte.
Yes.
Are you agreeable to not presenting but making yourself available if we have any questions or comments?
Of course, I agree.
Okay, then let's do that, so panel, questions, comments? Being none, let's go into committee for a motion.
I will move, Mr. Chair, to approve this application on the basis of satisfying the four tests. I do not see any conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic, a second for Ms. Popovic.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, all in favor? It's approved unanimously, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, may I make a request? Due to the fact that this is the second time I've applied to committee, I'm requesting a refund for the second fee.
This committee does not deal with that, it goes to our director?
Okay.
So, the secretary treasurer will consider your request. I will note that I understand that the survey had the correct figure, but your plans did not reflect the figures on the survey. So, the zoning examiner would have reviewed your site plan, which showed the setback of point six one, not the point five six. So, there was no error on the city's portion, it was, you didn't change the plans to match the survey. And that's why you're back today, I'm just putting that out there so you're aware.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Thanks.
So, that's a separate decision, and you'll be hearing more about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seventeen, five eighty-one Evans Avenue. Purposes to construct a new two-story garden suite in the rear yard. There's one variance. We have urban forestry condition two, and then in a freestanding memo from urban forestry, we have no conditions are requested. So, perhaps if we are dealing with an approval here, we could just simply state it's subject to urban forestry conditions, if any, or words to that effect. Panel, may we treat this as straightforward? Joe Dome is the agent, Mr. Dome?
Yes, Joe Dome, one thirty-three Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Thank you. Are you prepared to proceed without a presentation and answering any questions if we have any?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I just pointed out, there's a bit of a conflict between the information we received from urban forestry on this, so I guess your worst case is that you'll have to deal with urban forestry condition two, would you be okay with that if it came out to be that way?
Yes, that's right, I'll note the forestry memo on file is referring to a thirty-two-centimeter tree at the very rear of the property, and that's within the rear as of right setback, and the variance that's being sought doesn't impact the tree.
Okay.
That's why they result, that's what resulted in condition number two.
Okay, thank you, so panel, any other questions or comments on this one? Then let's go into committee for a motion.
So with that, I'd move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests, subject to the November twenty-seventh environment, climate, and forestry memo.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton, a seconder? Ms. Popovic?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Popovic, all in favor? It's approved unanimously? Thank you, Mr. Dome.
Thank you very much.
And our final item on this morning's agenda is number eighteen. Twenty-five and thirty-five Thomas Riley Road. Purposes to modify the development standards from site-specific bylaw twelve sixty-eight twenty eighteen. There are... Wow. Thirteen variances. We have a MetroLinks advisory, transportation review is okay, we have a planning condition. And again, I would make the comment that these variances are described in a way that is less than helpful to members of the public and even members of this panel. So, we will need a presentation to sort of clarify exactly what's proposed here. The agent is Michael Kara. Mr. Kara?
Yes, good morning, sir.
Yeah, if you could sort of walk us through the project here.
Will do, sir, my name is Michael Kara, I'm legal counsel for the applicant in this matter, Concert Real Estate Corporation. My address is five two five five Young Street, Suite eleven oh one. I would note that I'm joined today by my client, Mr. Kuda Saburi. Pretty empty audience, I'll let you guess which one he is. He's the director of development at Concert, and he's here to monitor the proceedings today. Thank you, I see that my presentation materials have already been pulled up, and I'd ask that we begin with page number two. Thank you very much. The subject application is related to two buildings that are contained within a development project known as the Kip District. The Kip District is a master-planned mixed-use community comprised of five towers, featuring a mix of condominium and rental units, centralized open spaces, and an internal network of private roads with public easements. Part of the impetus behind the scale and design of the Kip District is the close proximity to the Kipling Transit Hub, three hundred meters away, which integrates the TTC with go-trains and buses, as well as other local bus routes. If you could turn to page four, please. Now, given the size of the overall development of the district, from inception, it was always envisioned that the Kip District would be redeveloped and constructed in multiple phases, of which I would note there are three. The first phase, consisting of one tower, was completed in August twenty eighteen. The second phase, consisting of two towers, was completed in May twenty twenty-three. And finally, the subject application before you is related to the third and final phase of the overall project. If you could please turn to page five. Now, on your screen, you'll see a rendering of the two buildings that are contained on the, are proposed on the Phase Three lands, namely a thirty-seven-story condominium building to your left, and a thirty-six-story purpose-built rental building to your right. It's important to note that both of these buildings are already the subject of existing approvals from both the City of Toronto, as well as the Committee of Adjustment. And as I'll explain in greater detail momentarily, the new variances being requested emerged as part of the site plan approval process for the Phase Three buildings, based on detailed discussions with City of Toronto staff regarding the finer details of those buildings. As will become apparent through my presentation, the new variances, of which there are three, are quite technical in nature. They affect components of the building such as the underground levels and the internal layout of certain floors of the buildings, and therefore relate to areas of the buildings that are not readily perceivable from the public realm. Now, with that context in mind, I'd ask that you turn to page seven of the presentation so I can review the three new variances. Now, the three new variances, which are identified as variances one through three here, are related to the maximum number of residential units, the parking supply, as a result of our client reconfiguring the underground levels to remove one level of underground parking, and finally, the loading operations for Phase Three, which is aimed at facilitating the phase development of these new buildings. The other items noted in this list, four through thirteen, were previously approved by this Committee of Adjustment in April twenty twenty-five, but are being reapplied for because one of the conditions of approval that was currently, or that was previously imposed by this committee remains pending. That condition is the requirement for the owner to enter into an agreement with the City of Toronto pursuant to section forty-five nine of the Planning Act, which is effectively a mechanism to formally secure the commitments being made by our client related to the rental units contained within Building B of Phase Three. Some of you may be familiar with that presentation from April that was done by my colleague. If you could turn to the next page, I'd like to make a few brief comments about the three new variances in particular. So, the first variance is related to the maximum number of residential units permitted within Phase Three. As you can see, a total of seven hundred and ninety-six units were previously approved for the site by this Committee of Adjustment, meaning that the subject application before you today would permit one net new unit, which resulted, again, from the more detailed design exercise for the project and the floors. It's important to note that our client remains committed to providing an appropriate mix of unit types and sizes through this development to ensure the creation of a complete community, including through the provision of family-sized units on the site. If you could turn to page nine, please. The second variance is related to the minimum number of parking spaces and emerged through the reconfiguration of the underground levels. It's supported by transportation report from BA Group on behalf of the applicant, and given that the site is located within a PMTSA, minimum parking ratios are actually not permitted under the Planning Act anymore, further demonstrating that this requested reduction of parking supply is appropriate for the site. If you could turn to the next page. The third new variance is related to the loading configuration. Much like the parking rate, it was studied and evaluated by a traffic justification report, which has also been vetted by City of Toronto staff. Very quickly, paused report from planning staff, paused report from transportation staff, no other public comments. One condition of approval, which our client consents to. I know I'm out of time, I have one further request, but I'm happy to wait for any questions that you might have. Thank you. My final request would be, and I hope that you don't find it presumptuous, I just want to say it before any motion is made. Certain of the variants, certain variances that you're seeing refer to a revised Schedule B twenty twenty-five, which is an amended version of the bylaw map from the site-specific bylaw. At the previous committee of adjustment hearing earlier this year, this committee recognized the value of appending this schedule to the written decision so that a reader of the decision can readily see the schedule that is directly referred to in the variances being sought. So, again, don't only be presumptuous, but if the committee is inclined to approve the application as recommended by staff, subject to the one condition of approval requested by planning staff, I would respectfully request that the motion to approve include a specific direction that revised Schedule B twenty twenty-five be attached to the committee's written disposition. Subject to any questions, those are my submissions this morning.
Thank you. Panel, any questions or comments for Mr. Kara?
Just one question, so why do you think it's important to incorporate that?
I share, thank you for the question, I share the chair's concern. The readability of the variances is key for those of the public. It's also key to anyone looking at this bylaw in the future, because it has certain historical steps. Because the variances refer to a schedule, our hope is that someone doesn't need to look behind the curtain, go and find the bylaw, look at the schedule in order to understand the relief being sought today. So, I believe with the motion, having that map appended, it'll make things far more simple for anyone looking at this file in the future, whether it's a member of the public or developer, to know, you know, what is actually being approved by the committee today, as opposed to it being a bit of a game of, you know, trying to find the underlying document.
So, just to know, for the committee members and the applicant, we have been doing that recently. But Nicole, if you can share revised Schedule B and then the side-by-side comparison, the concern I have is in the side-by-side, you didn't provide the entire, it's just an excerpt. And the comparison is with the previously revised schedule, you should always be comparing it to the bylaw, because the committee isn't giving a variance to a variance. They're always going back to the bylaw. So, when you look at this one compared to the one that's just labeled as revised Schedule B, this is only a portion of the site, it's not the entire site. So, when we asked for those, I'm just letting you know for the future, we need the entire thing to be shown, not a portion of it. Because that's a misleading, like, we're trying to give full some information to the public and to the committee members, and when they're seeing this, they can't see the entire revised schedule, but they're also not comparing it to what the bylaw is. They're comparing it to a portion of what was previously approved.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess this all relates to my opening remarks. Variance is four and seven, as you know, require the public and us to study, say variance four, Schedule B bylaw twelve sixty-eight twenty eighteen. Much simpler to say what the minimum building setback on Schedule B of that bylaw is numerically, and then the variance that you're requesting numerically. If I was a member of the public, I'd look at that and say, I have no idea whatsoever what the bylaw allows and what they're asking for in terms of relief, which is why I don't like variances like this.
Sir, if-
Anyway.
I agree wholeheartedly.
It is what it is, this is what you've requested, so it'll be on this basis that we will decide.
And for context, sir, the reason why it's, we've had to do it this way is because, again, it's a site-specific bylaw, and City of Toronto staff have wanted us to work within the confines of the existing structure and the methodology of that bylaw. So, it's a bylaw from twenty eighteen, and we've been doing our best to, you know, stick with that structure, even though, you know, through time, it may have become more of a complex bylaw to understand. But I appreciate your comments.
Okay.
So, going back to my question, Chair, you will then demonstrate both what was approved in twenty eighteen and what the bylaw changes are now?
To clarify, sir, so there's two visuals that we've submitted. There's the comparison, which is twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-one, which is relative to a different amount of variance application. What I'm requesting that you append the written decision is just a standalone copy of the new mapping that would apply if approved by the site. So, I appreciate the comments, but I believe that the committee should have that clean version of revised Schedule B twenty twenty-five that it would need for the purpose of a motion to append.
But again, I'm going back, not the previous, not to them, to show what the previous was.
To the original, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Four to thirteen were before a panel previously, pretty much. So, only variance one, two, and three are new.
Correct, sir. Correct, sir. That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, panel? I'm going to ask a question- Uh, I'm gonna ask a question. Were you okay with the five-part condition from the planning department?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, then let's go into committee for a motion.
Excuse me, Chair. I I do actually have a question.
Sorry.
So in the materials, there is a January third, twenty twenty-three urban forestry memo, and I don't know if it's for the agent or for Madam DST. Um, absent a subsequent urban forestry memo, that one survives. Is that correct?
No, that was submitted by the applicant, and it was related to a planning application for site plan. It has nothing to do with this application. It's just background information.
Thank you. Then that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, we're okay to go into committee then? Let's consider a motion then.
Uh, Chair, before we move into the motion, how do the other members feel with respect to including the schedule?
We we've been doing that, just so the committee's aware. We started that maybe a month ago, maybe a little bit longer, where if there's revised diagrams or schedules referenced in an application, because Toronto Building finds it helpful to have that readily there so that they're not searching or asking for it later. So we're doing it automatically.
You're doing it automatically? Including it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Agree, agree. But if you want, you can tie it as a condition as well.
Um, I believe the uh, the proponents' solicitor is asking that it be included, and I don't see a problem in including it. My question related to the fact, as the chairman also specified, looking at it and how did it change from the previous? But I don't think it's important to look at the previous, what was in the past. I think what's applicable today, what's applicable on the site today is what what is important, Chair.
I would agree with that.
So, Chairman, I'm I'm prepared to make a motion on on this application. Indeed, this is a complex application that we've had, we've we've heard before in the past, and the changes that are being proposed in variance one, two, and three, in my view, are desirable. They're necessary, they're desirable, and eleven through thirteen, sorry, four through thirteen have not changed in essence to what we have considered before. So I'm prepared to move approval and authorization of variances one through thirteen. I believe that they're desirable, uh, they're necessary, they're they're appropriate, and also they do not change the vision that council had for this project in its original approval of it. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve and authorize those variances subject to the planning report of uh uh, planning report of uh November the twenty-fifth, um, which include one condition but four parts, four through E inclusive. Uh, transportation.
That's five parts.
Five parts. Well, one, one condition, but to be clear, five parts, A through E inclusive. Transportation had no requirements. Subject to that condition approved, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gully. Is there a secondaire for Mr. Gully's motion?
I will second that.
Thank you, Ms. Popovich. All in favor? That's proved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Kara.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we will now adjourn until uh one P M. when we will begin the second uh phase of today's agenda. One o'clock. Is that okay, staff? One?
You're okay?
One fifteen? One? One o'clock it is. Where's my gavel? So until you're gonna pass on lunch?
Are you gonna go for lunch?
Yeah, you're not gonna go?
I don't have enough time to do my errands. I'm gonna go.